Call to order the special call meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, Shawnee City Commissioners, September 26, 2011. Call roll, please.
Stevens, here.
Sims.
Here.
Heron.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Wenderman.
Here.
Stan. We have four.
Okay. Item number one is work session discussion of capital improvement projects and funding First, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I didn't think we'd have this much of a crowd. The purpose, really, tonight is to understand kind of what the details of our funding options are, how do we get to 15 million for 10 years? What's the impact? How do we raise 35 million in 10 years? Those kinds of things. So I think we're looking at some clarification for us as we move forward with projects of how we might be able to fund the capital improvement projects. This really isn't supposed to be what project goes in what list or what projects are yes or no. This is mainly the financing end of it. So can I turn it over to you, Brian?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting is a work session, kind of inform commissioners about the ways to finance. Tonight, we have Alan Brooks and Chris Gander here, who are financial consultants, one of whom's an attorney. Don't hold it against him. He's been doing this for a long time. That's Alan Brooks sitting over there. I didn't see John Womble come in. He's also been doing the finance thing a very long time. These gentlemen have come to kind of talk about the property tax and what requirements there are in the property tax for projects that don't know, particularly as it relates to ballot, also sales tax. And some of the information they've got is based on what came out of the committee that commissioners created. We realize that that hasn't been finalized yet, but it felt like you guys needed to hear this information so that you could make an educated decision about how you'd like for those to fall out. So I'll turn it over to those guys, how they want to go from here.
He's first.
Well, I'm John Womble, and I'm with PLSC. When we first started over there, we were with Oppenheim, and we're the bankers and independent financial advisor, but we're the bankers. And so you come to us and just say, how much can I afford? You know, how much do things going to cost me to give me the ...? So we do not select projects or anything like that. We're just trying to give you kind of a ballpark of what would ...? We can get it as narrow as you want, but what would 10 million, 5 million, 10 million, 20 million dollars cost the taxpayer versus if it was a sales tax or if it was a general obligation bond? How much would it be? And these are, of course, they're all estimates, but how much would it be on the property tax, Rose, if it were a general obligation law? Chris has ...? Chris Gander has done a lot of the numbers, a lot of the things that you have requested. And Alan Brooks, he's not a limited attorney, but his practice is limited. All he does is things like this, what they call public finance, but other cities and other counties and municipalities in Oklahoma. So he can explain. What we're trying to do here, what would be helpful is that we give you some parameters responsive to you of what items would cost on an annual type basis, then you would come back with to us with a list of these are our projects and these, how much we think that they will cost. And then Alan, with Mary Ann and others, can legally say, you know what, to be ...? To get the clearest thing to the voter and what your public wants, this is what the proposition would look like. And then you all would have time to look at those propositions and make sure that it's crystal clear to the voter of what you're doing. Alan, you want to ...? You're much more articulate. You went to school.
You want me to sit down?
Yeah. Again, my name's Alan Brooks. I'm with the Public Finance Quadrant, Oklahoma City. I'm glad we're having the conversation we're having this evening because, you know, we were here a few weeks ago talking about trying to call an election that's going to happen in November. And I mean, every time we talked to Mary Ann, things were a little different, and we're getting pretty nervous about trying to figure out how we draft those documents and get those to you in time to really have an opportunity for you all to look at that and review them and get meaningful feedback to us. So I'm not sure, you know, if it was negative or positive in terms of deferring, from your standpoint and from our standpoint, I feel a lot better. One of the things I think we want to talk about tonight is, again, let's talk about the projects and what some of the parameters are in terms of how they're spitting together. Another thing we want to talk about is maybe lay out some timeframes, kind of normal timeframes in terms of this is when we're talking about having the election, this is when documentation has to be approved through the election board, establishing some dates prior to that where we can have some decisions made. We can get draft documents, you can look at them, and everybody has the opportunity to kind of work through that. Two basic things we're talking about. We're talking about, one, sales tax election, all right? Two, a general obligation bond issue election, at least as I understand what's been discussed so far. And I think a lot of the issues that were balled around, which projects are going to be funded, what the size or the scope of those projects are going to be, and where do they best fit? Do they fit in the GO side or the general obligation bond side of the legislature? Either do they fit in the sales tax? And some of them can go both places. Like a lot of communities, you want the fewest number of questions from the simplicity standpoint submitted to the voters. We worked with the community here recently. They just called an election. They were planning on two propositions and they ended up with an election, all right? That's not where you guys want to be because it can get really complicated, but there are some limitations in terms of how we can group those projects together.
I can tell you I didn't want me to wind up very easily with two, three questions and it can be a big deal.
So, and again, that's ...? On a general ...? Let's start there. On a general obligation bond issue, typically, the projects need to be grouped logically. In other words, street projects typically will stand alone, but you might have park projects that can vary in terms of multiple parks or variety of parks, those kind of things. Public safety oftentimes is grouped together where maybe you have fire and police and, you know, warning sirens and those kind of things under a general public safety category. There needs to be some logical connection between the projects that are grouped as general obligation bond issue question. In other words, as an example, you can't have streets and public safety as one proposition. Part of the rationale there is there's some case law in Oklahoma where you can't kind of couple a popular project with an unpopular project and try to drag the unpopular project along, okay? And the reason it's important for us to get that right is because the Attorney General in Oklahoma has to review and approve general obligation bonds before they can be issued. So we've got some history with the Attorney General of Office and the fact that they're going to want to look and make sure that you've got, you know, appropriate projects, appropriate projects.
But you can do that. We've got plenty of time to do that between now and February, too.
Well, we certainly do have time. And what we want to make sure, though, is that we kind of address the issues and get them fleshed out where we're not scrambling around late in the game. We want to, again, we want to make sure that we get information from you all early enough that we can draft documents, get them to you, and you can look at them and ask questions. It's pretty normal to have all those documents finalized and approved by the council, but you know, a good two or three weeks in advance of the date that you file the election. That's pretty normal. And again, we would typically have documents to you at least a week or 10 days before the time you're considering for approval so you can look at and make sure we have everything covered.
So if you're talking specifically, if you're talking about a February voting day, then I think the approval would have to be December the 8th. But we have a regular meeting. What day is it?
The 5th.
The 5th. So we would want ...? A good cutoff would be like November 1. It's November 1, November 5, to where we've got a whole month because it's the holiday season and everything to where you can comfortably look at those. And you, as the commission, and all of us, we want the right things. If you're going to have two different elections, you want the right thing charged, if you will, or paid for by property owners, and the other, the correct thing to be paid by sales tax. And that's just kind of the right thing to do. Let me mention another just general parameter that relates to the general obligation bond. One, there is more than one type of general obligation bonds that can be issued there or referred to as Article 10, Section 27 bonds, which are public utilities and streets, roads, and bridges, all right? Under Article 10, Section 27, there's a statute requirement under what's called the Bond Proceeds Act, where you have to identify with some specificity where at least 70% of proceeds are going to be used in connection with each proposition. So as an example, let's say we're doing a street financing. You would need to identify those streets that are going to receive work at least to the tune of at least 70% of the amount that's being voted. The remaining 30% can remain unidentified, but they have to be used for the same general category of streets. So in other words, if your bids come in high, you can use some of that 30% to actually complete the streets. If your bids come in low, you get the 70% that you identified done, and then you use the rest for remaining street. You can identify more than 70%, but in a minimum, you have to identify that 70%, okay? So that is a ...? GO bonds under Article 10, Section 27 are the most ...? Those are the most rigorous requirements in terms of identifying projects and having group projects. We've got another category of general obligation bonds that are to be issued and voted separately, but issued under Article 10, Section 35 of the Constitution, and those are for economic and community development. That's 70% requirement. The Bond Proceeds Act does not apply to those bonds. So we can be more general there. The limiting factor is there's only a five mil limit levy per year that can be used to repay those. And I think if we ...? It seems like Chris ran some early numbers, and based upon your NDSAS valuation, you could only do in the neighborhood of about $6,000, $7,000,000 of these general obligation limited tax bonds. But it's a tool that more and more communities are using when they want a little bit broader when they might not have all of the specific facts relating to the project before they call the election, okay? Oklahoma City did that in their last GO election. And it gave ...? Giving the flexibility, you don't really know what economic development project's going to happen along the ...? In a certain time period, and so it gives them the flexibility.
The other thing, under Article 10, 27, under the public utility street bonds, you have to ...? The public utilities have to be owned exclusively by the city as opposed to general obligation limited tax bonds. There's not an ownership. So that, again, that creates some flexibility where you have perhaps title issues, joint ownership, things like that. So again, those are ...? What we're trying to give you is just kind of some general background.
That could act with me on a different ballot then. It would be a ballot on by a state by a city.
That would have to be a separate question to vote the Article 10, 35 bonds from the Article 10, 27. We just did that in Dell City. They did two $3 million propositions. One was the GOLTVs or general obligation on the tax one. But again, two propositions. Now, that's one side of what we're talking about. The other is sales tax. Sales tax, as most of you are aware, you definitely ...? The Bond Proceeds Act doesn't apply. You do not ...? You can be as general as voting the sales tax for general municipal purposes to as specific as you want to be, okay? I think the city currently has two general pennies and then one that is more capital improvement slash economic development and some specific purposes. But you can be as general or as specific as you want as it relates to ...?
The economic development, you know, economic, five mils. Is that how long a period of time is that for?
You can levy five mils per year, all right? And I think under that ...? I think you can issue those bonds over 25 years in terms of term.
I ...?
No, I actually know that. I have that written down.
Yeah, five mils per year, you actually wouldn't have to issue a bond. You just write those five mils and not issue a bond.
Now, you have to be ...? I think the mils have to be used towards debt service. In other words, it wouldn't be a pay issue.
It's actually ...? Bonds issued for 10 years or five years or 15 years.
That's correct. I mean, you can identify not to exceed 25 years, or you can make it shorter term. You obviously have limited ability to sit in the ballot time. And that's the same way with GOs. You can have a ...? Your ballot can provide for longer term GOs, and you don't have to issue them over a long ...? Over that longer period of time. Typically, people will set the ballot language where you have a longer period for repayment. If you decide to do it for a shorter period, you can. A lot of times on GOs, and I know you all talked with John and Chris about this, a lot of times on GOs, a lot of communities target a mil, but because they're on Article 10, 27 or public utility bonds, there is no legal mil limit, okay? So you tend to provide information to the public that, you know, we're going to vote this many bonds, but we're going to issue these bonds in a way that would keep our mil level ...? They're going to target average mil limits. So that's used a lot by communities now.
Although you have any, you know, what our present date mil is here? Well, it'd been Shawnee, 993.
That's such a stupid question that I've had my assistant ...?
I know exactly what it is, but I didn't ...?
No, no, I'm just kidding. Chris, what's the mil? Chris knows everything.
The city, you don't have any GO debt.
Yeah, they have no GO.
Thank you.
It's doing it.
Yeah, and then I actually have a report.
It's in the report. I'm sorry.
I don't exactly know.
In the OS, John, that I gave you.
School ...? I'm sorry, I don't have school. It's about 100 mils. I'm sorry.
101.
101, okay. I apologize. The city that has GOs that outstanding, the only other thing typically a city with less than four judges to the extension for that's ...?
We had, I remember, Washington Forum, about $4,000,000, $5,000,000. One year.
Yeah, a half years ago. Right. But for example, the current levies surrounding towns, Oklahoma cities, it's 14.97. That's just the city, of course, where ours is zero. Dell City is 10 and 1/2. Yukon is 10 mils. Enid is 8 and 1/2. Stillwater is 5 mils. Monmouth is 5 and 1/2 mils. Not to say they're ...? Chickasha and Edmund and Bethany have zero, but they also have zero ...?
Midwest City.
Midwest City has seven, 7.3.
That's the most recent. Like it did one year.
Right. Right.
Now, I mean, again, what we've given you is some kind of general parameters. John mentioned this early on. I mean, one of the things that, I mean, typically, the way this works is you all have some idea what the tax impact is, depending on how much GO debt you issue. Kind of come to some agreement, okay, we're looking for a tax impact or a levy rate targeted at this level. These are the projects now that we want to look at, that we would fund, the GOs and/or sales tax. You know how much the sales tax, would you generate about a half cent as an example? I know that's been the target amount you've been talking about. But then coming back and saying, okay, here are the projects we think we wanted to, and here are the approximate amounts of those projects. And then, again, typically, we would try to take those projects and work them into a scheme that would ...? And again, there's more than one way to do it. I know you guys have wrestled with that.
There's a ...? For me, anything over 70, you know, it's on the general bond issue side for me. Anything on any of those, it's got to be less than 10 years' worth.
The good news is there's seven of us.
The bad news is you don't want to go into elections opposed to it.
So if the ...?
It's a world ...?
If the average Shawnee village is 101, is that the number?
Right.
Is that what you say? So on a $100,000 home, what is the typical resident paying right now for everything that's bonded through property tax?
You know what? Percentage on our ...? Percentage of assessment is in 5 counties or 12, 13.
It'd be about it. If it's a ...? I don't have it for that before. We'll talk about if you issue ...?
Yeah, you're just about increases here.
And a lot of times, that tends to be kind of a relevant question. In other words, what do we ...? For a voter to approve this proposition, what does it cost? If I've got a $100,000 house, I've got a $200,000 house, what does it cost?
Right. I mean, we've done it a 20-year amortization with a market value of $100,000, and approximately the increase would be $110. It would be 11 mils or $110.
That's 20 million, 20 years.
So if you're at 100 mils right now, who we're talking about, it'd basically be about $1,000, approximately $1,000, which you're paying right now for a $100,000 house. That's over the 20 years. That just confirms what you're paying.
11 ...? You take your NDSAS valuation at 11% and then you deduct a $1,000 for homestead exemption. So that's how you get approximately $1,000 for a $100,000 house now, as you currently have. But with these questions, we will ...? We can get the specific answers. You know, you just identify the questions you want, and we'll send them back to you in a report that's got the exact, up-to-date information on ...?
So if ...? So the only option that we have here is 20 million, 20 years. So if James says he doesn't want to go 20 years, so he want to do 20 million, 10 years, it's not a straight line double, is it?
Now, what we came up with on that, 20 million for 10 years, and going back to statute, you can't, unlike a car payment or your housing, you have level principal and interest payments throughout your maturity. On GO debt, you have to have level principal payments. So therefore, by doing that, you start with a higher payment. Every year, it gets less and less and less. So I never ...? We can't ever say your mil levy will be this. Here's kind of a scale. It starts at 15 and it goes 14, 13, decreases. So then we kind of have to average. So with that being said, 20 million for 10 years, we get an average of about 12 mils with a high of 17 mils.
If, of course, it depends on if you did 20 million and it depends on if you sell 10, you come back three years later and sell 10 more.
Right. That's something we've talked about in previous meetings, because that kind of smooths it out a little bit.
Do a minute relation of that, slide on camp center, about 12 to 15 percent. Even though it's ...?
I mean, some things you ...? And again, I know we've talked about some of these things. Some of the issues that you have to take into account is how many projects can we ...? How quickly can we get a project out? Do we have to engineer it? Do we have to buy land? Those kind of things. What's the construction timeframe? I mean, they're under the federal tax laws, and these are all going to be tax exempt obligations. You have to reasonably expect you're going to spend the money within three years to the date you issue the debt. So in some cases, we don't want to get it issued too early, depending on what you're going to need for engineering or design time. So those things factor in. So again, a good point is that sometimes you will time the issuance of your debt to create that level payment as opposed to going ...? You can kind of go with an average levy, or you can try to time the issuance so you go with a level max.
So 12 to 17 percent increase is really where that answer is, and we can level it maybe? And that's where you get the 15, James, maybe? Okay.
If you all would ...? If you all would tell us what you want to do with the GOs and the timing of doing it with the GOs, then we can provide you with the detail of using current rates or an increase in those rates. But a lot ...? Make a much clearer picture of what you're ...? I mean, one of the others are just to kind of give you both sides of that argument. One of the issues to get into in terms of if you think you can get your projects up and running now, I mean, obviously, this is a great time to be building infrastructure projects. I mean, construction costs are low, and from an interest rate standpoint, I mean, even in John's long career, interest rates have never been this low. So I mean, from a market standpoint, this is a good time to be building and borrowing funds. So you kind of weigh that in this, kind of timing it out and stretching it out. And one of the ...? The last thing I want to do is the argument that Mr. Herrick here. But one of the things to think about is that some of the cities have thought about when you say, okay, I only want it 10 years because that's kind of what we normally think about. It's amortizing. We don't want debt over 10 years, just a house mortgage or a car or anything else. But if you think ...? But some of the cities have said, we've said, well, the average, you know, the average payoff of that is really a lot less because of this increased principal that we do under state law. You see what I'm saying? It's instead of paying, you're paying 1/7 of your principal the first year instead of, I don't know what the normal amortization would be. The statute requires principal to be front and low. So these are very ...? And try and load it anyway. And we can give you those average rates.
What I was saying, too, what is the ...? For the sale of the bond, is it a break even point or, you know, is that 5 million, 7 million, something like that on the sale of the bond? Gets to the point where you're not too expensive to sell a small bond?
You know, GO bonds are required to be competitively bid, and, you know, you've got school districts that issue very, very small amounts.
And cities.
I mean, frankly, nothing you're talking about here, I think, is going to necessarily fall into that minimum amount. I mean, you ...? Just to keep your block sizes up, I mean, you're probably going to want to keep, you know, issue at least, I would think, two or three million in a tranche. But based on the projects you're looking at, the dollars we're talking about, that doesn't strike me as a problem to run into here.
Especially if they're short term. The banks are eating up. I mean, the banks have so much cash, you don't know where they invested it. So the banks are big buyers. Right. But they're big buyers, like GO, Oklahoma GO debt, kind of almost any size, especially if they're within 15 years.
Your average rate right now would probably be about, on a 10-year GO, probably about 2 and 1/4 percent. 2 and 1/4. What about a 20-year? I don't ...? I can guess three.
Less than four.
Yeah.
I mean, the yield curve is pretty flat right now, so you don't get, in terms of the rate, you're not getting dinged like nine in a different economy where, you know, a 10 and a 20, the rate's going to be a whole lot higher.
Now, keep in mind, we're talking about GO debt. GO debt will sell at a lower rate than any sales tax debt. Not, you know, concerning, but at a basic basis, points of view, depending on maturity and everything.
So don't take GO rates that we're talking about as sales tax obligations. We can sit up here and talk a long time. I'd like to be responsive and maybe answer questions.
Well, and I don't think we're at the point to talk projects right now so that you could be more specific with us. I think we all maybe wish we were, but we're not, but this is part of the process. One of the questions that came up from us after one of our meetings was the fact that we have a current TIF district right now. And so how does the levying of an additional GO bond on that TIF district, how are those funds handled?
Man, I'm interested. Mary Ann, did you print off that email that they'd sent you that answered that in great detail of examples?
No. They ...?
Just that.
The ...?
Just that it is.
The just.
One of my partners is kind of our TIF guy, and he answered, I made him ...?
He answered it in great detail.
Yeah, he answered it in great detail. I would love to defer that issue until I had it in here. I guarantee I'll screw it up.
Unless Brian happens to have it on his iPad, the email.
Did you forward that around to anybody else? Might have changed.
Well, it was a long one, and I really wanted the short version.
Well, if you hand him the long version, he can give you the ...? Well, if you hand him the long version, he can give you the short version. But, but the main, the main thing is, it doesn't affect what's there now, it's what the, the TIF money comes from the value of the improvements made within the TIF district.
The increase.
Yeah, the value of the, of the improvements, how that increases. So it's not a particularly significant, it's not going to be significant.
I mean, your TIF district, where is it again?
Downtown. And I don't know, has there been any increased valuation downtown as a result?
Yes, yes. Okay, so here's the long version.
Let's go to the next question.
It's a, it's a very technical thing that he can tell you, but it's immaterial. We would adjust, when we start telling you, or of course, we're saying that it's going to be 15 mills, we will, that will have been adjusted.
But in the TIF district, the rate goes up also, the millage that, that would be our, the city's additional bond, but that money all goes into just the TIF district?
All they get is what's based on the increased value of the improvements. So let's, let's say a business was worth $100,000, you do the TIF, and now it's $200,000. So the, the increase of 100 to 200, that $100,000 is the TIF assessment. When you come back in and do a new bond issue, it goes on the whole 200 and has no impact on the in-between 100 and 200.
It's the improvement.
It's another, it's another value on it.
They give the ad-loom or tax against letting on increased incremental property value.
They, they get that first 100, on that first 100. Okay, but the new increase, well, the 100 of increase, I'm sorry. The first 100 keeps going where it's always gone.
Right.
The second increase, second 100 goes into the TIF district. Okay?
Right.
What came as a result of that, and then it's back to the general fund again, if there's a new levy. It's not going to be a significant number in any direction.
But that, that is, the bottom line answer is you, they get the ad-loom amount on the incremental increase over the baseline where the TIF was created.
Okay, okay. So specifically, and I ask because we have people here that are from that area, so there are concerns about, we never put money back into that area, I don't want to paraphrase, but if, if their increase goes into the fund that we're collecting for the TIF improved, the TIF district improvement, then even though we could levy and pass an ad-loom increase, the funds in the TIF district still only have to be spent in that TIF district. The additional ones that we would levy.
It does not hurt the TIF district. They still get the money they'd have already got.
Right, right.
Yeah, but maybe a simpler way to say it, let's, let's assume you create a TIF and the value never changes. Nothing happens, okay, all right? But to the extent that the value of the TIF property for the baseline goes up by 25%, that incremental 25% of goes back into the purpose of the TIF.
Right, right, okay.
So it's, that's the simple answer. You get me much further than that, I'm going to be on thin ice here, but that's
Actually, the possibilities are. If on economic development, it could be a valid issue by itself, for the five minutes, whatever other projects we decide on before that, that people find.
You could do, again, general obligation limit taxable, it's going to be issued for a broad category that's called economic and community development. That can be, I mean, a lot of things fall under the statute that expands on a constitutional provision. Anything you could do with regular GEO bonds, you could do a GEO limit taxable, but you could do a lot more than that. You could utilize bond proceeds to incentivize development to come to town. In other words, pay dollars in consideration for the creation of jobs. You could spend dollars on any kind of project, infrastructure-type project that benefits the city, but you could use it on things that can't work exclusively on either city.
So you can use it for demolition to
You could use it for revitalization efforts, it would be available for that.
And it doesn't have to be the whole five mills.
No, it's up to It's exactly what we used at Tinker, what Oklahoma kind of used to demolish the houses around Tinker. Expand the runway, is that five mills? What we're saying is, the limitation, you're broader on what it can be used for, but your limitation is five mills, which is about 5% of your property tax right now.
We used it, we used it in one community for drainage improvements, because where they're going to put those drainage improvements, it wasn't clear that they had more than just a right-of-way. In other words, they did exclusively on all the property, went real clear on part of, as a public utility, so you can do general obligation limit taxable. Another community had a lot of, they had some projects they wanted to do, but they weren't sure exactly how they're going to spread the money out. It was actually a parts issue, they weren't sure which parts they were going to do. So to do parts generally, they decided to do that under a 1035 question. There's some flexibility there that
But you can't do one parts, I'm not sure which, for five mills, and do one economic development, community development, five mills, and one
Five mills total.
Or one, okay, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
17.
An example, if, if you wanted to put that in your basket of tools here, and you go three ways, you could do your 10-year GEO bond at a smaller number, and keep that millage down, and then take your neighborhood revitalization, economic development, maybe the trails, some of those things, and do that over in the five mill, and then put your capital improvements projects together in sales tax issues. I mean, some of them would go in the big GEO, GEO bond.
Mary makes a good point, like sidewalk, you'd want the ones, sidewalks and trails, those a lot of times are on property you don't own, in other words, you might have a trail running through an area where you just had maybe an easement, or you did exclusively on the property. So sidewalks and trails are ones that are kind of hard to do with straight old GEO bonds.
But what, what it does is it allows you to take some things, when we're looking at just two categories, GEO and sales tax, there's some things that would absolutely have to go sales tax, because they won't fit regular GEO bonds. But if you add that third GEO piece, that third piece, which is a limited GEO, you could take some of those sales tax and move them. So you're still paying for them with GEO bonds, but you just split up the way, and you could, it doesn't mean you're increasing the mills, it just means you're setting them different ways.
I have a question on, on the back side. So the city could receive additional $6 million without decreasing its debt service by refinancing its bank note and extending the term of the sales tax pledge in 20 years. First question is, do we have any other information about that specifically, or, you know, concerned about what the breakdown is between increasing the debt by refinancing, and then how much do we have to, what if we didn't extend that term?
Want me to answer that? This is a report we do about once a year, and I just brought this kind of from my own personal information, and then, just so you guys would have something, and you could look at some, there are some pertinent things on there that we want you to see, so everybody can get a copy. But that all relates to something that will be paid off at this year, so frees up about 750 something. So this was done a year ago, so you could have at that time, instead of waiting till you paid it off, which you'll be paying off in November, is that right, Brian?
December.
December, you'll pay it off in December. At that point, you'll just have 707,000, but you have been having to use the debt service free. So at the time, I was just saying, instead of, instead of having to increase your debts, you know, if you did any issue, you'd have to pay interest on top of what you were paying on that note, so basically, you'd just be rolling that old note into another note. But now it's paid off, basically, just saying you have $750,000 free, and I say free, you guys may have plans, but that $750,000 now could be used to pay different debt services.
But we don't know if that combination you can probably answer at this point, is what you're thinking?
What's the woman's combination?
Well, you know, and you're saying we could, we could refinance the bank note.
Yeah, and we don't need to do that anymore, because we now pay it off.
So this really, this
No, so we're saying that we can extend, if you want to, you've been paying 715 a year, so if you wanted to, and you've now paid it off, so if you want to continue paying 715 a year for the next 20 years, then you can borrow additional $6 million.
But it would be a lesser amount if we didn't want to extend it for 20 years.
That's right, and we can provide you whatever you ask.
That's what I'm asking, is how much less it would be, because we have a difference here of how much we want to extend this debt for.
I could probably give you, with rates being as low as they are, we can give you a pretty good ballpark, if you just said how long, because you have $750,000, if you did it for 10 years, that's 7.5 million total. Interest on that might be $500,000 over 10 years, so you'd get about $7 million upfront for projects.
But you're also telling me that it's a higher interest rate for sales taxes than GEO bonds.
But we consider that when you
It'd still be, if rates are still up.
Dynamic of that before, I knew about $6 million for 10 years before.
Yeah, just ballpark.
I think you run, somebody ran some figures over there on my toilet, you're dealing about $7 million.
Yeah, and we might have a reserve fund built into that, you know, we'll kind of get some, a little specific, get to that point.
Well, that really was kind in the second phase of this meeting, I don't want to move into that. We have some projects that we had been talking about that were in this new capital improvement list of, of sales tax GEO bonds, and because of the, of the February dates for elections, there are some things that we would like to discuss, can we do SINGER? And if those, I mean, those are expo improvements, and we'll just get that right off the table. So it, is it possible to roll some of the expo improvements with some of the other improvements that we were planning on doing with that 750,000 a year, some capital improvement projects? Is it possible to roll those up, short-term, into $3 million bond? And where's the break even, you know, because if it's only a million, it's probably not worth going through all the paperwork and doing. So at what point, or what would our payments, or how much could we get for payments on $3 million for three years or five years? Would it use all the 750, would it not? Can we even have that discussion?
Thank Brian, all the evidence.
I don't have the details, I didn't bring my laptop, but it's part of the budget presentation that I did, we presented to the commission the ability to be able to potentially do $3 million for three years. And our thought process behind it was that even though we had financed around $715,000 that we were paying back every year, we were going to pick some projects in the next three years that we've been trying to put together.
Paying a little bit, a little bit.
A good example would be the library roof. We've been trying to put some money toward that every year, if we put $50,000 toward it every year, it takes us five years to get the $4 million, we need to put the library roof up. So what we thought we would do is, particularly, man, we were talking about the expo parking lot, that number came up to about a million, four, million, five, and then we were talking about putting together another million and a half of other smaller projects that we've been trying to get done, and get them done now, because interest rates are low. Somebody else talked about, you know, the cost to actually put these together and sell them. I mean, there is a flat cost that goes inward, it doesn't really exponentially go up if we go from a million and a half to $3 million. You know, it was sensible for us to do that, and that would allow us to get some of those projects done, and free up some of that other capital money to get some of the other projects we've been waiting on. So, so yes, I think, I think that would be our recommendation, it was during the budget process, that we, in progress, we could go forward and finance a portion of what we call the third penny, to bring some of those projects to fruition, if that answers your question.
When you're talking about like a revenue note, the revenue bonds, I mean, those projects can be combined together for purposes of sale, or if you lay out specifically into the tax certification, we'll have to go through, do some tax diligence, but you know, this is what you're going to do with this amount of money, this is what you're going to do with that amount of money, and lay that out and combine all those and issue them as one obligation. So whether you're talking about three or five, or whatever the number is, those things can be rolled together, you can do them for three years, for five years, and it's just, it's, because you, again, you're not talking about new debt that's going to have to be approved by the voters, you're not talking about
Right.
New revenue pledged that would have to be approved in terms of sales taxes.
So we did have a list of capital, smaller projects, I don't know how else to call it, and it was like the roof on the library, 200-something thousand. I mean, we had some projects like that, that we were just ready to roll up and get them done, so that we weren't having to save 25, 50,000 a year, and we finally had something to go do the project with, because it's eating out of our capital budget every year to buy police cars and swings and, you know, everything else that we do with that.
And in theory, I mean, you got so, kind of did you got, I mean, weren't you a little better on that waterline project we done out of Chicago? I mean, I mean, you'd be, where there's
Right.
People coming in from all over the country to work, because Oklahoma's still doing that. So again, capture today's construction process, and it doesn't cost you much an interest rate to do that.
A lot of projects were, park, they were parked on, we bought it, voted and instructed the engineers to get those plants ready, so you know, get that project done.
One of the advantages that Shawnee has is the problem that one set themselves down. And when we originally, we originally passed that, you did have a relative to maybe other cities and towns, you did a 10-year note. And so now the 10 years is up, you paid it off, and so it's what to do with that 7, with that additional debt service. And so you have that flexibility of, and size-wise, there's all kinds of investment vehicles or lending vehicles, you can, I wouldn't worry about the size, I mean, you'd be
Only, only thing we might talk about is the fact that if it's something you wanted sooner versus later
Yeah, that's my next question.
Where you've got, I mean, not only interest rates and construction costs, but there's the, what's called the $10 million bank qualified, you're going to have a greater interest from banks if you do some of your debt this year. Has the city done, no debt's been issued in calendar year 2011, general.
Projects not yet, they could close out yet, so probably not.
Did we close it in 11? That counts towards 10 million. Did it close in 11? My memory is shot. Anyway, basically, what we have to do is, we, towards, towards the $10 million bank qualified, we have to count debt that's issued by the authority and/or the city, all right, with kind of the component parts in this calendar year. So if we did the waterline in 11, then my point might be But that's the point of workshop. You all tell us, you tell us, hey, we think it's going to be 500, or we think it's going to be 3 million, and we get back, we're going to tell you the cost and the advantages of doing one versus the other.
We have a schedule for the
Been confirmed on that, it's just a day out there, but I
I talked to the commissioner, day for day, but I'm, I'm sure, I missed, the meeting was already over when I got out, and so I was trying to make sure to get that
It's been suggested, but not confirmed by them, if they'll be available on the day.
The joint meeting is what you're talking about?
The next meeting is Tuesday, so next Tuesday.
But it is possible for us, in relatively short amount of time, to ask you to put together a package for us? Okay, okay.
Absolutely, it could be done before the end of the calendar year.
Or the very beginning of the next one.
I can, I can, we can kind of look into more details, but that is a short-term process. But then once we get kind of more direction, we'll
Okay.
Another question, we asked our experts this evening.
But if, maybe just look down through the projects that were proposed, and how would you propose to lump those projects together and what process, what order?
Or tell us if we either want or both, or...
Or if we ask the Georgia, save us tax or add one tax?
I mean, is the list of projects pretty much still the same list of projects as, if there's been a significant change?
Yeah, the mouse is probably...
But no project has been added. We can say that. When one comes off, we don't know.
But it depends on just getting a balance.
Water.
Water and additional money for street, but then we are...
Right now, it's basically the list that the committee came out with is what we're comfortable with.
Essentially, anything on the list can be done with sales tax, okay? I mean, that's the shortage, okay? So then the question becomes, what makes sense to do as a GO? And how many propositions do you want? I mean, we could do almost all of it with, we could do all of it with either general obligation bonds or general obligation limited tax bonds, okay? In one of those two categories. But the question becomes, how do you group those together? You've got, you know, a larger expenditure relative to parks, okay? So that's one that can kind of stand alone, all right? But, you know, beyond that, the projects are so varied that you start, unless you do a general obligation limited tax bond, or six or seven million dollars and lump several of them together, which you could do, all right? If you don't do that, then you start splintering out with them, you know, you're back to, you know, the community that ended up with 11 propositions, okay? And again, at least my advice to you would be that a huge number of propositions is considered to be.
Did you ever determine whether the park project and the expo could be grouped?
Well, we've had some concerns relative to the ownership interest, okay?
And we never, I don't think we ever really felt like we could do parks in the entirety of the expo projects you were talking about. We talked about the possibility of doing the recreational park, RV parks as part of the park. As I understand it, most of the RV parks, Steph, you now are interested in doing upfront right away, so that's going to fall off the bond issue anyway.
We're talking about them, park, a lot, not RV renovation, out of that.
To do an Article 10, Section, to do an Article 10, Section 27 bond, the property has to be owned exclusively by the city, but you've got...
Or a trust.
No.
Exclusively by the city.
Well, that answers, I mean, that's a yes or no question. That's what I don't understand.
It has to be owned exclusively by the city.
Okay, so the answer is no, they cannot be combined.
Look, there were...
Correct?
Part of it, that's right, they cannot be combined. But that's, no, you're using it to answer a different question. That means it cannot be used as a GO bond. It doesn't have anything to do with the combining. That has to do with can we finance it with GO bonds.
Okay, my question was, from about two months ago, was can the regional park and the expo projects that were listed from our committee, 26 odd million dollars, could that be a combined in one question on a GO issue? And the answer is no.
Not the way it's currently on. I know we got some question about what if we went in and deed the property, you know, credit.
I've seen the picture, and I understand there's a problem, but that's, I just wanted an answer. So no, they cannot be done. Okay.
Got it.
Is there anything else in the, that's listed? I mean, there's obviously a problem with economic development under a 20, Section 27 bond.
That would not fall under the category of public utility on streets and roads.
Okay, so it would have to go under 35 for economic development.
Or be part of your sales tax.
Same thing with neighborhood revitalizations. Would have to be...
It could be 35 or...
35 or sales tax. It could not be GO.
Let me go back to the list.
And if we do...
And I'll say sidewalks and trails are difficult and are 1027 because oftentimes you don't have the time or ownership of property, so that typically is not done under 1027. We've done it sometimes where they're like in connection with a road project. It's kind of like the sidewalk, as you're building the road, it's almost purpose, but then you're kind of cross-country and sidewalks, trails, it creates problems. So that's one that would be an issue.
But that's where you can do a GO limited?
Yes.
Up to a certain amount of...
Up to about $7 million, so just got to make sure of about. The total project. So can you all give us an Excel sheet that's got all your projects?
Yes.
You've got your projects listed.
Yes, because that's what we were just talking about. You have the list that you said, GO, GO limited, sales tax, check, check, check.
With the timeline, with the expenditures, yeah, we could do that. Of the expenditures for those projects. We all, you don't need them all first, so, because they got to comply, Allen's got to make them comply with tax law. So if you could give us here one, two, three, and four, if you could give us that.
There's also, don't forget, a specificity issue when you're looking at the difference between GO bonds, regular GO bonds, Section 1027 debt, and sales tax. You're going to have to be more specific about which streets for a GO bond than you have to be for sales tax. So a lot of these things can be funded either of two ways. But it kind of gets into how much do you know about what you want to do, how much do you want to be locked into?
Let me throw another issue out to make it unfortunately a little more complicated still. I mean, we're talking about state law issues here. You've got federal tax issues. Most of this stuff will finance on a tax exempt basis from a federal income tax standpoint. But as an example, economic development, if we're going to go out and, some communities will pay dollars to a company to relocate here in consideration for jobs being created. Generally, that's not done on a tax exempt basis.
Is 35 tax exempt?
It can be either way, taxable or taxable. It's a functional project, okay? It's kind of a separate set of requirements. But a lot of the things, you know, your public utility type things, if you could do it under 1035, it would be tax exempt where it has, again, things that tend to go private, like giving money to companies, incentivizing, tearing down houses, making property available for redevelopment, those are tend to be things you do taxable.
So does the...
But that doesn't mean that the city can't do it taxable, it just increases...
Or you pay cash with sales tax and do it on a page you go basis, or borrow short-term taxable.
So much to be repetitive, but the five mill under 35, is there two categories, taxable exempt, or it's still a total of five?
It's a total of five, okay? It's just a function of how we actually issue the debt. And we wouldn't combine taxable, I mean, we would sell, yeah, taxable debt, you've got one purchaser or a group of purchasers that would be more interested in that.
So Frank, it could be, we assumed it was taxable when we said it's 7 million. Maybe it's, once again, you guys tell us, but if it's six, if it's taxable, maybe six and a half or 6.25. It may not be approved, 7 million dollars. It's just a higher interest rate.
And guys, and ladies, I know this is, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. So you can, you understand the angst we're having when we're thinking we're needing to draft a document, show up with it for approval. I mean, there's just a lot of ways you can slice and dice this deal. And we want to give you all the information that you need to ultimately make that decision.
And basically, these rules are for the protection of the taxpayer and the vote. It's to make, I mean, it sounds so complicated here, but it's, but what they're for is if the voter says to paint the barn red, I want the barn, you know, they'll paint the barn blue. And so that is what it's all about, is getting the voter a clear picture of what's going to happen. So if you give me an Excel sheet, if you give me a capital budget, give me three years, however long it's going to take to do it, I can get it back and start circulating and say, okay, here are the potential they could go in GOs, and here's...
Let me kind of play the other side of that argument. So we say, the more specific we can be, the better protected the voter is. Well, to some extent, okay? I mean, these are fluid projects. We're working with cost estimates. We don't have bids in hand. So the more specific you become, frankly, the harder it is to make, in some ways, wise business decisions down the road. So it's a balance between the flexibility that you need, I mean, this is a business, okay? And you need to make business decisions. And we've worked with communities that cinched themselves down so tight because they thought that's the only way they could get the voters to approve it, they had real difficulty doing the projects.
But on the 27, you're already, by the law, you're based, I thought it was 80% for the 70%.
That's correct, 70%.
But you have a contingency and everything else that tend to all your projects, so you may or may not, you're within 15%. So our projects have probably gone around about, you know, 85% of the cost that we have, estimates we have.
I mean, again, in this market, you know, engineers tend to provide better estimates. I mean, you know, four years ago, we were having projects that, you know, fresh numbers are in the project, they came out 100% over budget. I mean, it's just because it was just too hard to, again, we're in a pretty good situation today, but, you know, three years from now, that could change.
I understand. They, on the GO, any of the GO bond issue, we talked about it, that just 50% plus one is all?
Majority vote. General obligation limited tax bonds and Article 1027 bonds are 50% over. School bonds under Article 1026, those are quite the 60% vote. Sales tax, as you know, also 50%. So everything we're talking about here is simple.
So John, you're asking to see a kind of a timeline for projects, funding requirements? Is that what you're asking?
Just ballpark funding requirements.
Okay.
Because that will tell us when we can issue those GOs and provide you the cash. So that will also, that will also have to do with the leases.
Okay, so would we agree that we start with the committee's kind of projects list to get the ball rolling? What was submitted?
As projects to understand timelines?
Yes.
Too much of a turnaround on the time on that, just sell it, just sell it issue.
I mean, I want to see this guy's...
So your question, like, from the day you know which projects are and you want a sales tax issue?
What do you want to present?
On existing, right.
Existing sales tax?
Yeah, if it's 60 days, 45 days.
We could definitely do it in 60. I mean, if you said rush, 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 possibly it's 30, okay?
I'd like to see it possible done by the person who's in it. We're talking about bid dates, working in the middle of winter time and stuff like that.
Again, I think you guys need to tell us what you want to finance with that. We need to do some tax due diligence to make sure that the projects can be agreed on.
I'm sure it depends into your budget. The debt service. We did not end up adopting a budget with those figures.
I know, but if you have the figures...
I've listed, I've listed.
Yeah, we had a list of projects before we started talking about the expo meeting this right now.
Oh, partner, I know the partner.
The RV spaces were not.
Right. But that gives us an idea, if we could get that airplane in the wild on the side.
I have a bud, huh?
I've got a whole box of them, but I don't wear them. I wore them for 30 years, and I've got them all the time.
Anything you want, besides kind of this matrix and talking about this issue?
I'd say for right now, yeah, for us. Ronnie, do you have anything else?
No, I'd like to have some more conversations about the expo and the projects and all that. Because we did have a half a budget with those projects, and we got a budget originally that said it could, all of the capital, but we can have it to be...
I was going to say, you want to have that right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Let me get with, let me get with Waldo and find out what the sheet actually lays out what roughly the $3 million is what we talked about during the budget process, so we'll go with that.
Well, I actually want to get all the figures.
Yeah. But the projects in that we talked about a budget, if the expo projects in for presentation, see where we're at, that might, yeah, that might jump us over a tree. We don't have to do all of the project. Then we can make a decision where to go on that. Okay? Anything else? I remember two. Anyone? Motion to adjourn? So, a motion by Commissioner Stevens and a second by Commissioner Harris.
Stevens?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Miller, Ringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harris?
We are adjourned.